This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Since 1974, Chuck Anderson Ford has proudly served the community's automotive needs. From new and pre-owned vehicles to parts in service, they've been there in the past and they'll be there in the future. Visit Chuck Anderson Ford today. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
Good evening. It's six o'clock and I call our regular city council meeting for April 7th, 2025 to order. We will begin with an opening prayer offered by Pastor Shannon Green from the United Methodist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Let's pray. Loving God, as we take a few moments to be still and to pray, we ask that you would center our hearts and our minds on you and on the beautiful work that you have called each of us to do. It's so easy to get caught up in our everyday tasks and what we need to accomplish that we forget about you. So in this moment, we make space to thank you and to praise you. We are grateful for each new day you bring and for the opportunities you give us to serve you and one another. Help us to remember that we are all working towards the common good that you call us toward, the flourishing and thriving of all people, including here in our community of Excelsior Springs. Help us to truly love our neighbors and to get to know them better in these warm months of block parties, barbecues, park gatherings, and get togethers. Let our city be known as a neighboring and welcoming community. As our city prepares to vote tomorrow on several ballot measures relating to the future of our Excelsior Springs schools, we ask for guidance and direction. Lord, we are grateful for our school district, for our teachers, our educators, and every coach and staff member in our local schools. Help us to support them as they support our children and students through their work in the classroom. And we thank you tonight for our city leaders and for every member of the city council representing Excelsior Springs this evening. As they meet and vote and make decisions, guide them and direct them and keep their hearts and our hearts on your call to love others. For it is through your steadfast love that we pray all this. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming, Shannon. All right. Could we have the roll call of council members by the city clerk, please?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Present.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
At this time, I'll invite any guests who would like to speak to the council. If you've already signed, if you're going to speak, please sign the book, step to the podium, state your name, your address, and your reason for coming.
My name is Angela Jewell. My address is 404 St. Louis Avenue, apartment number 404, Excelsior Springs, Missouri, 64024. And I want to bring before you a matter that I think is a safety concern. This is on Kearney Road in between South Titus and I think, oh, I just lost it. It's Stephen Road?
Woods or Wal?
It's on Kearney Road where there's Job Corps that goes up a steep hill, up an S-curve, and then on the left-hand side, it's South Titus. South Titus, and then there's cable lines or power lines that are there, but the trees are really overgrown. I think it's Stephen Road? Anyway, you know what I'm talking about, right?
I recognize.
You recognize the trees? Yeah. So I just feel, yeah.
Reggie had it Kevin.
Kevin, that's it. That's right. I can't believe I lost it just there. But safety doesn't happen by accident, and these trees are not going to correct themselves.
You want to see them more?
Sure.
I just feel like they're going to come down sometime, so it's better to be prepared for them instead of during inclement weather when it's like a snowstorm or ice storm or windstorm, and then there's a traffic obstruction and then an accident. And I just, I just think it's a safety concern, and I just wanted to bring it before you and just tell you about it. Hope that you would trim the trees.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Shannon, would you like to see those pictures?
Surely.
Does, does right service hall?
No, they're just for AMR.
Just for AMR, okay.
And you guys can keep those pictures.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Kelly, did, did you want to speak?
I'd like to have them allowed to.
What's that?
I'd like to have them allowed to.
Yes, absolutely.
I didn't know it's kind of regarding agenda items, so. So my name is Kelly Anderson. I reside at 801 Dumber Avenue here in Excelsior. And I had some questions about the proposal for our four zoning modifications. So Eden Village has been working with the city for three years to determine appropriate zoning for our development. We were sent addresses by city staff that we were told were zoned appropriately for our development. And now, after being sent those addresses, our permitted right to build in that zoning is being proposed to be changed to a planned district zoning, which then requires approval by planning and zoning and by the city council. So we're seeking clarification that if our structures, meaning our, our homes and buildings meet the density requirement and other requirements outlined in that draft being considered tonight, would we have your support as we go through the planned district process?
Well, that comes in the form of a question, and this public comment time is for, for only that, for comments.
For comments, okay. So we would hope that if we go through, if we make those requirements, if, we would hope that if we meet the density requirements and we meet the other requirements in this draft proposal, that we would receive support from planning and zoning and from city council for our development, because we've already been through that process once.
Okay.
And so we're concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll get back to our agenda here. Whoops, one too far. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 17th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 17th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting from March 17th, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll pose like sign. Minutes are approved. And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it has been presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Agenda has been approved. First item on the agenda is a presentation of an annual stormwater report, and we have presenting to us tonight Nate Conyers, our stormwater coordinator. Welcome, Nate.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Under our municipal separate storm sewer system permit, the city is required to take steps to reduce pollution and stormwater runoff. These steps are divided into six areas: public outreach and education, public involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff control, post-construction runoff control, and good housekeeping municipal operations. We are also required to provide the city council with an annual update of a status of our MS4 program. To meet these requirements, the city continues to work with the Mid-America Regional Council's Water Quality Education Program. In addition to Mark's efforts, this year, the city published three Facebook posts with stormwater education topics, maintained nearly 87% of our stormwater inlets marked with no dumping messages, posted an earth day cleanup along the Fishing River with 61 volunteers picking up over 59 bags of trash and 12 large pickup loads of bulky items. That was also with parking wreck was involved at, as well. Participated in household hazardous waste numbers, however, were not available. Met with 60 students and four teachers from Lewis Elementary about flood control, met with four detention basin owners to educate them on the maintenance requirements, met with five property owners about stormwater related issues, performed 35 inspections, or excuse me, performed 35 outfall inspections. One illicit discharge was reported by the public and three were reported by city staff. All were investigated immediately and resolved. 3,976 feet of sanitary sewers were inspected via CCTV. 65 commercial site inspections on five active grading permits were performed. 42 inspections on 20 active residential permits were performed. 56 basins were inspected with two minor violations. 37 employees were trained in stormwater standard operating procedures. City staff completed 493 miles of street sweeping and picked up 27 bags of trash from city right of ways. Each maintenance facility was inspected twice with no major issues identified. Any questions or concerns? Thank you all for your time.
All right. Number two on the agenda is consideration of purchase of Ford F-550 truck for water department, resolution number 1560, presenting tonight is Chad Burtzong, our public works director. Welcome, Chad.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Public Works has budgeted to purchase one truck in the water department for the budget year 2025. And like last year, due to the supply chain issues, the F-550 trucks, which are causing availability issues in the bid and ordering process, we are not able to bid and place an order for a cabin chassis with a dump bed in a timely fashion that keeps the expense in the same budget year as it was approved. We found a truck that meets our specs at a Latha commercial sales. It is a new 2024 one-and-a-half-ton four-by-four cabin chassis with a dump body. After applying the municipal bid price to the vehicle, the sales price is $92,392, which is within our $95,000 budget. The truck will be replacing a 2006 Ford F-150 with 144,443 miles on it and will be sold at auction at a later date. Resolution is attached, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Does this include the dump bed?
Yes.
In the 92?
Yes. Now, the truck, the truck alone was, let's see, 71,650.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chad? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1560, a resolution approving the purchase of a 2024 F-550 truck with dump body from a Latha commercial sales for use by the water department.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution 1560, consideration of purchase of Ford F-550 truck for the water department.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Need further discussion? Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
All right. Number three on the agenda is consideration of purchase of GMC 1500 pickup truck for pollution department, resolution number 1561. And again, presenting is Chad Burtzong.
In pollution, we budgeted this year $50,000 for one vehicle, a half-ton pickup for the budget year 2025. The low bid from the city was Robert Robertson's for $43,855.60. The truck is a 2025 model, but was used as a loaner vehicle, and it does have 2,312 miles on it. It is still considered a new vehicle. Invitations to bid were sent out from to the three local dealers being bid on March 21st with a sealed bid opening on March 28th at 10:00 a.m. The bid tab is attached, and at this time, we are recommending the purchasing this truck for the 2025 budget year and the pollution department from Roberts-Robinson. Resolution is attached, and I'll be happy to, again, answer any questions you might have about it.
Hearing no questions, Chad, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1561, a resolution approving the purchase of a 2025 GMC 1500 pickup truck for the pollution department from Roberts-Robinson Chevrolet Buick GMC.
I move that we approve resolution number 1561, consideration of purchase of GMC 1500 pickup truck for pollution department.
Second. Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern? Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. That resolution is approved. Number four on the agenda is consideration of change order number one to the contract with Mega KC for the Dry Fork Greenway Project, resolution number 1562. And again, it is the Chad Show.
There you go. Change order number one with Mega KC on the Dry Fork Greenway Project consists of three items. Number one is to replace 1,761 square yards of asphaltic concrete pavement, which were seven inches thick, to 1,761 square yards of eight-inch non-reinforced concrete pavement in the area of North Main by the Box Culver, a portion of Kennedy, and northeast 143rd Terrace up to the bridge. Unit costs will go from $42 a square yard for the asphalt to $101.53 per square yard for the concrete, and for the total increase of this amount is $94,266.33. Change order, or the number two on this item is change order is relocating one fire hydrant two foot from the sidewalk. Unit cost is $11,300 for hydrant and a valve assembly. The third item is to install additional two-foot of foundation stabilization underneath the reinforced concrete box culver in the wing walls with four-to-12-inch diameter rock. Estimated cost for the 158 square yards is $111.18 per square yard for a total of $17,566.44. And item number four is a reinforcement for the slab barrier transition tie-in around there, and that is $2,732.72. The original contract price with Mega KC was $3,446,468.25. Change order one totals $125,865.49 for a new contract price of $3,572,333.34. This leaves about $192,115.26 for additional change orders for the remaining, remainder of the project. Resolution is attached. Again, we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1562, a resolution approving change order number one to the contract with Mega KC Corporation for the Dry Fork Greenway Project.
I move to approve resolution number 1562, consideration of change order number one to the contract with Mega KC for the Dry Fork Greenway Project.
Second. Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And that resolution is approved. Number five on the agenda is consideration of agreement with the Department of the Army, ordinance number 25-04-01. And again, we have Chad Burtzong presenting.
That sounds exciting, but it's just for sewer mains.
So it's free, free waters.
This, no tanks are involved in this.
No storming beaches.
No storming the beaches. This agreement is with the Army Corps of Engineers, is for design and construction assistance on various sewer main improvements consisting of rehabilitations and lining of existing sewer mains. The total amount of federal funds available under this agreement is $1,925,000, which is the 75% with a city match of $641,666.67, the 25% share, with a total project cost being $2,566,666, or $2,566,666.67. That's easy to say. Cost incurred by the government will be $192,500, or 10%, which will limit our project then to $2,374,166.67 minus our match of $641,666.67 for a total of $1,732,500 of federal reimbursements. The areas of this sewer collection system needing sewer main improvements consist of rehabilitation and lining, where originally the add alternates from our bond issues from 2010 to 2015, which ran short of funds. So these funds include the Wilson Acres Neighborhood, various streets in the area of Glenwood, Wildwood, and Linwood Avenue, Golf Field Drive, East Valley Park, Forest Drive, Bell Drive, and Old Time Drive. Most all this work will be done inside the existing sewer main access them through the manholes, so there shouldn't be any disturbance through very many streets or anything like that. McClure Engineering will be the design engineer for this project, since they were the original plans were designed by SKW Engineering. Since then, SKW was bought out by McClure, and they have all the original design plans that will need some updating in order to complete this work. An agreement with McClure for the engineering phase will come into council for approval in a few weeks. We're hoping at the next meeting, and ordinance is attached for this approval. Any questions?
Hearing no questions, this is an ordinance and will require two readings. For the first reading, an ordinance approving an agreement with the Department of the Army. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-04-01 to second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to take ordinance 25-4-01, consideration of agreement with the Department of Army, to second reading.
Second. Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And for the second reading, an ordinance approving an agreement with the Department of the Army, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-04-01.
Move.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Reggie.
All right. Move to approve ordinance 25-TAC-OPT-4-TAC-OPT-1, consideration of agreement with the Department of the Army.
Second. Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And that ordinance is approved.
Thank you for all this.
And I believe we're finished with you, Chad.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of amendment to section 400.130 R4 Medium Density Residential District, ordinance number 25-04-02. And presenting this ordinance to the council tonight is Mallory Brown, our Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening for your consideration is an ordinance to amend the zoning text for the R4 Medium Density Residential District. The text amendment creates permitted uses, which are medium-density apartment buildings, medium-density two-family housing limited to planned district, and housing for seniors, multifamily in nature in a planned district. The text also amends the, amends the requirement for them and requires a maximum lot area for two-family dwellings, creating more density in the district, and requires landscaping for two-family dwellings and senior apartment complexes. These amendments were considered by the Planning Commission on March 31st. The Planning Commission did recommend approval to the city council, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any more questions or comments from Mallory on this agenda item?
I want to sincerely thank Planning and Zoning Commission for their time, thoughtful discussion, and work in handling this tax amendment. It has not been an easy item, and I appreciate the care they've taken in considering how to best support appropriate development within an R4 district. That said, I don't believe that it is a right moment to impose a planned district, planned district requirement on duplexes within the R4 district. Planned districts are a valuable planning tool. I think they need to take a step back and reevaluate their broader use across the zoning code, how and when they should be applied, and what kinds of barriers or benefits they may present. Without that citywide perspective, implementing this requirement now feels premature. To be clear, it may, we may very well revisit and return to the idea of requiring planned districts for duplexes in R4 in the future, but right now, the timing doesn't feel right. My hope is the city manager will ask the new community development director to take a comprehensive look at how planned zoning is being used in our community and to bring back recommendations as part of a wider policy discussion. At this point, I would move to direct the city manager to modify proposed ordinance by removing the planned district required as it relates to two-family dwellings and to include a revised ordinance on the April 21st agenda.
Okay. So if I understand the procedure correctly, we will not move forward or call for a second reading on this ordinance, but we will, you have a motion on the floor to direct the city manager to modify the proposed ordinance by removing the planned district requirement and to include the revised ordinance next meeting, which would be April 21st. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Shannon, roll call?
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
That motion is approved. We'll revisit this without the planned district requirement on the 21st. And with that, we'll move on to number seven. On the agenda, consideration of authorization of destruction of certain municipal records, ordinance number 25-04-03. Our city manager, Molly McGovern, will address the details with the council.
Yes, thank you very much. We try to update our list of record retention according to the Secretary of State's guidelines, and we have included a list of documents that are, can be destructed, destroyed from, I think I've got police, fire, community development, HR, and anybody else. Maybe there's some public works.
And economic development.
Economic development included that have met their retention schedule. And we have scheduled, I believe in May, for someone to come and shred those documents on site. So that's, that's our plan.
Okay. Any questions for Molly?
Not necessarily specific to this, and maybe it's the comments at the end, but if we are bringing someone, I know I've mentioned before, I think Plank County had a documents shredding event open to the public, and I think that would be a really good idea. I don't know if there's a way we could leverage onto.
Okay. Well, I'll take a look at that.
When they are here, I wouldn't want to exponentially grow the cost of it, but.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
I, we, we happen to know, I think it's in the document, the volume that we're including. So we'll just look and see what that would pertain to.
Okay.
I think probably only matters to us, but we're trying to give a 30-day notice of what documents are included in our shred. I'm not sure that pertains to many other people out in the public.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that sounds exciting. I've, I've never been to a public record shredding before.
So the last one was held, and it was at Pleasant Valley Baptist, and it was aligned similar to the hazmat. There were a couple of people in line.
Oh, you, so you're inviting the public to bring their documents.
Oh, tax returns.
I thought it was just for spectatorship. I'm bringing popcorn.
Something you wouldn't want to be blowing around on the street of Recycle Day.
Okay. Got it.
Should have brought this up about two weeks ago.
Yeah, John's been shredding for days.
Yeah, I've got a shredder in the garage. Okay. The first reading reads like this, an ordinance authorizing the destruction of certain municipal records. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-04-03 to second reading.
I move that we take number 25-04-03, consideration of authorization of destruction of certain municipal records, to second reading.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And for the second reading, an ordinance authorizing the destruction of certain municipal records, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-04-03.
Move to approve ordinance number 25-04-03, consideration of authorization of destruction of certain municipal records.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon? Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes, and that ordinance is approved.
With that, we'll move into remarks, and we'll begin with our city manager.
I don't think I have anything, is, did we attach?
The transmittals.
We have a court, the court report for March, what was the second item?
Rural Missouri barbecue, Wabash was named first.
Oh, that's right. As you can tell, I haven't exactly learned how to reach everything I need to, my.
Yeah, I wasn't able to access them on here. There's an email that got sent later, yeah.
Yeah, so we're excited to say Wabash barbecue was listed as a, maybe a top contender in the state of Missouri.
Rural Missouri, yeah.
Rural Missouri, so we're very excited to, we, of course, concur with that, having done the taste test ourselves, but.
Many, many times.
Highly recommended.
Yeah, especially the babybacks. All right, we'll move to remarks by city council. Mayor Protem Spear, we'll begin with you, so I don't forget you again.
Nothing deceiving.
Until I get used to it.
Yeah, nothing deceiving.
All right, Councilman Rennie?
Yes, I'm, I'm excited about the Silver Prong. I've got a date for Saturday. I encourage everyone over 60 to attend.
Does Anita know?
She does know.
That is an exciting time. I no longer fit in my tux, so I'm gonna have to find something else to use. I did last year, but.
Things change.
Things change. Gravity, gravity happens.
You got taller.
Councilman McGovern, what say you?
Well, the 2025 Piccadilly was held this last Saturday evening, and it was a huge Nate was at the top of his game, as usual, in his pink sport coat. It was real nice. It was just, as usual, it's always a lot of fun, and Saturday night was no, no exception. The only other thing I have is that Thursday, May 1st, is the mayor's prayer breakfast, and it starts at 7:00 a.m. It'll be over with 8:00 a.m. sharp, and tickets are available. Most everybody here has some, but just in case.
Price is negotiable.
Price is negotiable.
Keeps going up.
Well, you know, you get better.
The city prices.
It's a pride of the man.
Yeah.
Well, I understand Pastor Mike Boudreau went to Jeff City Sunday to hear the guest speaker. He just wanted to make sure he was, he was gonna be a good speaker before he brought him in, so.
Nice touch.
Yeah.
That's all I have, sir.
All right, Councilman St. John?
Tomorrow, exercise your right to vote. Is, you know, that's one thing that we still have that a lot of countries don't, and we need to exercise that to make sure we can let our voices be known. And the other thing was, Saturday, we drove down through downtown. I don't remember where we were going even, but it was a nice day out, and you couldn't find a place to park, which I thought, this is great.
Yeah.
And there was people all over, walking around and so forth, and it's, as we discussed previously, it's so much better than what it used to be.
Uh-huh.
And so looking for, being better than better.
Always run for improvement.
Yes.
I can remember the days when you couldn't find a place to park on a Saturday night also, but it wasn't the same kind of parking problem.
Was it positive?
I used to be one of those who was parked on the street.
I remember.
Yep, all right. Well, I will echo Councilman St. John's comments on exercising your right to vote. There's a levy issue on the ballot, there is also a school board candidate election, and there is a certain councilman that is seeking reelection, so exercise your privilege and your right. And with that, I will entertain, oh, one other comment. I was delighted this weekend, we had our grandkids Saturday evening, and I told Ann Sue, I said, I'm gonna take Xander and Kinsley down to see the re-channeling of Fish, the Dry Fork of Fishing River. And so the track hoes were, were going down to the north end and picking up piles of brush and bringing them back down. They had a big fire going, and, and they were fascinated to, to watch that process. And they were, they were worried, because the one track hoe from our vantage point disappeared at one point.
Oh.
Yeah. It's a low spot in there, but it was a lot of fun, just watching the progress.
It's pretty desolate looking, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I love, I love the smell of burning wood, so for the last week.
Best place to hang out in.
Smell like a bonfire.
Yeah.
Did you take hot dogs?
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay.
We didn't want to get close. The road's supposed to be closed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Details, details.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the regular session and go into closed session pursuant to section 610.021.1 and 610.021.2, revised statutes of Missouri.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the regular session and go into closed session pursuant to the revised statutes of Missouri, chapter 610.021, paragraphs one and paragraph two.
You got that memorized, don't you?
I did it a lot.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Roll call Shannon.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?[1776.91]